During which the item is presented. So right now, oh, and I do have a question. So if anyone, if anyone-
It seems to be relevant to Christine's presentation. So maybe we should wait until-
Yes, actually, you know what, Renee and all the other attendees? We will allow public in, public comment after Christine's presentation during, during our discussion for grade configuration. Alrighty, so if we don't have any other questions at this point or statements, we will move on through the agenda. So the approval- Jess, did you have something to say? No, okay. Tim, the approval of the minutes, did you want to?
Sure, give me one sec because I just, I didn't have them up.
Oh, sure.
So I was looking for the packet. So I don't know if you can-
Oh, I have the date.
Yeah. If you have them, I'd be-
Yep, we're, we're approving the minutes for the executive session on May the 7th and May the 14th and school committee meeting on April the 23rd.
So moved.
So moved, do we have a second? Second, second by Jess, we'll take a roll call. That is Jess Riley.
Madam Chair, you want to retain those executive session minutes as well?
Yes, we do want to retain those executive session minutes. Thank you very much for reminding me. Absolutely. Roll call, Jess Riley, sorry again. Yes. Thank you. Leo Brem?
Yes.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anne Mae O'Shea, aye. All right. Passes, thank you. Now on to new business, the school choice hearing.
So Madam Chair, you can open up the public hearing at this point for school choice. And then once you open that up, I will give you my recommendation, but you certainly can, you know-
Great.
-you want to go ahead.
Right, so I will open up this public hearing and I think we have to take a roll call vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay. To, we'll take a roll call vote to open this public hearing on school choice. Jessica Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brooke, aye. Alrighty, it's open. Dr. Marston?
So Madam Chair, members of the committee, as we have in the past, I'm going to recommend that we do not participate in the school choice program. As you know, school choice, the school choice program allows for the district to establish open seats within our schools and allows people from, students from other towns attend our schools. And I know there's been some confusion in the past, but we just, we double checked it again. It is $5,500 per student. And Desi has indicated to us that they don't anticipate that going up at all. So, you know, I think based on what we're trying to do with potential overcrowding coming and certainly what we're trying to do with our own students, Medfield has never participated in school choice and I ask you vote not to participate again.
Okay. And I, I would just like to comment, especially this time during the pandemic, where our focus needs to be on the safe reentry of our students, our teachers, that this probably would definitely not be a good time to entertain that.
I concur, absolutely.
All right, so do we have a motion to, to actually not accept school choice?
So moved.
This comes in next time. So moved by Leo, second.
Jessica.
Jess Riley, and we will take a roll call vote. Jessica Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brooke.
Do we need to accept comments on that?
Let's see. Um, I don't think we have any comments on that.
We do, actually. I see Chris Potts here. Do you want me to read it out to you?
Yes, please.
All right, she says, at 5:07, "What is the projected class size for 6, 7, and 8th grade this coming school year? There is no overcrowding there. Wouldn't it help with much-needed revenue for such a small number?" And then she remarks, "You are going against school policy by not taking my question." I'm sorry that you felt that way, Chris. Actually, there's a little bit of a delay sometimes on-
Yeah, sorry. No, we will absolutely take this. And actually, Dr. Marston, will you answer Chris Potts's?
Sure, so I don't, I don't have the actual projections in front of me right now, but I know that we're looking at probably high teens, low twenties. So certainly there is room at the middle school. I just, you know, philosophically, I don't think that's something we want to go after, so.
I don't think we can limit by grade level what is open and available either with school choice. I believe it's all or nothing.
Right.
You, they change it, Leo, you can actually now. So you could say by, by particular grade, how many seats are available and you could do that as well.
We are then admitted to each one of those children for the next amount of time they are in school.
Yep.
And at $5,500, which is not what it costs Medfield to educate a child and looking at our considerable-
Wow, that, that went up. That's nice, it's closer than 8,000 now, but-
It's not, Leo, it's 55.
Is it 55?
It is still 55. We checked with Desi and, and they are not planning on changing that. It's been 55 and they don't plan on changing.
Yeah, I don't know where that, that number keeps on coming back, but it's-
For the virtual schools, the virtual schools are getting closer to eight.
That's true, that's true, yep.
Yeah, and I thought it was through school choice, but maybe it's just because of the virtual schools.
Right.
Yep.
So I, and honestly, the risks inherent and within bringing a child in at $5,500 while we are trying to manage such a significant budget issue, seems to me that unless we were to, it ends up increasing our class sizes while we are at risk of having to decrease the number of staff that we have. And it just seems to me that if in years past we've chosen not to, this is certainly not the year to start experimenting with school choice. We need to do it, we need to do it in a planned and studied way if we choose to do it, not because we need those extra $5,000. That's not how you treat children. You make a plan and you do it because it's an opportunity, not because it's a revenue opportunity. That's my feeling. So.
Um, I think there are more, we are talking about Chris Potts at 5:10. We are talking about such a small number of students and we are paying, and we are paying out for school choice. 5,500 is not incremental cost. We have empty seats on the bus that could help to cover staff costs and preserve positions.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a state, those are statements, I guess. I mean, I, I mean, I think that, yeah. I won't, I won't get into it, I've said what I said about school choice and I think that's where we need to be. The district has never done it. When this became a pseudo-issue a couple of years ago, when it was raised on social media and front page of the news and all that nonsense, I had a, I had a parent come up to me and say, "So Jeff, explain this to me." So someone, "I just bought a house in Medfield, so someone could buy a house in Millis or Walpole and go to our schools?" And I said, "Yes, that's what school choice is." And they said, "Well, why would I spend all that money to live in Medfield then?" And I didn't have a really good answer because that's, that's essentially the, what school choice is. It allows people to live in any town they want and take advantages of the services that, that you folks in Medfield pay for, so.
Yeah, I just feel strongly that we need to concentrate on, on what's happening here now. And this is not a good time for this. Um, all right, oh, let's see if there are any others. Chris Potts, "At 5:11, school committee should request a cost-benefit analysis to look at this more deeply before being so quick to vote."
Well, I think that we have looked at this fairly frequently almost every year and it, this year, I simply can't support it. I know that this is not philosophically the way that I would choose to increase coffers, honestly, and it's not going to be so many children that it would truly, truly close a gap. That's my opinion and-
I share that. Alrighty, let me see, so we have taken our vote. Chris Potts, again, "Aren't we sharing services with districts for special ed?"
But that's not school choice, that's tuition payments in and out. That's out of an entirely different pot.
Okay, so we may-
Do we need to reopen that now that we've taken those questions?
Yes, so I think we should vote again. Any other school committee members like to say anything regarding school choice?
I concur with both what Jess and you, Anne Mae, have said and, and also strongly agree that in this uncertain time, this wouldn't be the time to open the door to this because there are so many unknowns right now. So I don't have anything specific more to add except that I'm in agreement with you both.
Alrighty, so I think we'll, in fairness, we'll take another vote. Let me just see, there's one more. All right, "There has been no formal presentation with real numbers on school choice ever. Holliston has had a detailed presentation on all variables and school choice provides tuition to Medfield." Okay, duly noted. Alright, duly noted, thank you. All right, so I think we'll take a revote just now that we've taken these questions and statements. And do we have a motion on the table regarding school choice?
I motion to reject school choice for this year, the school year 2021.
Second.
Second, all right. We'll take a roll call vote. Jess Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brooke, aye. All right. So we will not, and so the public hearing is now closed, right? And do we have to roll call that too?
Yes, yep.
Sorry, guys. So, public hearing for school choice is now closed. Jess Riley?
Aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brooke, aye. We do this every year and every year I forget. All right, the end of year FY19 financial audit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael is going to present that in your packets. You had the FY19 end of year financial audit, which was another great one. Mike, we want to update us on that?
I don't-
So Michael is-
Is he an attendee?
Hi, Anne Mae, he's actually in executive session. I will ask him to join the public meeting now.
All right.
I'll invite him over.
Okay, lovely. Dr. Marston, should we jump to school committee dates?
Sure.
And come back to him just to keep you going?
Yep, so in your materials, you have the projected and the draft school committee dates for next year. Very similar to what we've done this year in terms of dates and you know that we always add meetings as we go along. So this is preliminary and a draft, but as we have this year and years past, if we need additional meetings, we will add those. But I just, any feedback on that? If you want to accept them, you can. If there's feedback, we can go back and, and look at it again and change them, whatever you'd like to do.
Yeah, I mean, my, I suppose my first feeling is that there's going to be so many unknowns next year that I'm guessing that we're going to add a lot more meetings to this calendar.
Agreed.
What is our thought? Are we thinking that we're probably going to end up meeting perhaps more during the summer than we ordinarily would? I mean, I'm-
I would think so, I would think so because the state, the state guidance will be coming out in mid-June or so. So as I've told you before and, and I'll say, I was going to say it again at some point during this meeting, but at our Zoom meeting with the commissioner last week, he told us not to get ahead of any of this planning because you may be in a situation where you have a plan in place, yet we're going to come out with guidance that is not going to be optional, it's going to be mandatory and directive and you have to change your whole plan. So they wanted us to be patient with that and I assume that once we get that in June, mid to late June, then we'll, we'll probably have to get together and do some, probably meetings in July, I would think.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure everybody was kind of prepared for that too. Because I know that's kind of a change from our usual schedule, so.
And do we like Thursday meetings? Because this is our first year where we went to Thursday from Monday. So I just wanted to throw it out there with school committee members.
I personally much prefer them. Has anybody else had a feeling about it in general? I think trying to network and kind of figure out what, who we would like to, to speak to and kind of think about like kind of how we, how we gather information about the things that are coming up on the agenda. It makes it much easier if we have some weekday times in between rather than, you know, getting the agenda on a Thursday or a Friday and then having our meeting on Monday. It certainly helps me. I don't know about the rest of you, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, I'm good with it, I like it.
It worked. So yeah, alrighty, so with that and knowing we'll probably be adding a lot more dates or certainly a few more dates, as it's written, do we have a motion to approve the school committing meeting dates for 2020, 2021? So moved. Uh, so moved by Megan Glenn, and do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Jess Riley. We'll take a roll call vote. Jess Riley?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
And Tim Knight?
Aye.
And Anne Mae O'Shea Brooke, aye.
Anne Mae, I just want to, quick, quick, quick. I didn't look and I know that I promised that I would look to see if, where the overlap was between Passover and the school committee meeting. Not, just in terms of making sure that it's not on the first night of Passover and I don't, I didn't look it up, but-
Well, we'll definitely-
It's a problem and we want to discuss that later, we can-
Absolutely.
Meeting, but I want to make sure that that's, at least we put a pin in that.
Absolutely. No, thank you, Jess. Michael LaFrancesca, we see you now. Welcome. So, end of year FY19 financial audit, pretty pleased, we got your report.
He's muted.
He's muted.
Strike two.
Ouch, man.
The end of year report was just submitted by Power and Sullivan, our old audit firm, because now we're going with the new one, to the Department of Education and the Board of Selectmen with no findings.
All right.
Congratulations, Michael, good stuff.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Small achievement. It's a, we find it normative around here, but it is not a small one.
All right, now are there any action steps that we need to take with the-
You can accept that or anything?
You could accept that, yes.
Okay, super. So do we have a motion to accept the year, end of year FY19 financial audit?
So moved.
So moved to second.
I second.
Second, Megan Glenn, and we'll take a roll call vote. Jess Riley?
Here, yes, aye.
Leo Brem?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anne Mae O'Shea Brooke, aye. And again, thank you very much for your diligence, Michael. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Great, so now we're on to school lunch price increase.
Before, before Michael goes into that, I just want to recognize the school lunch program. They've been serving lunches to community members and families since the pandemic began and also want to thank Blue Moon as well for donating all their baked goods to our efforts. They've been fantastic to us and great to work with. So we've been doing a schedule that is a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule, making sure that families have, and senior citizens have lunches, breakfast and, and lunch. And we're doing about 200 meals per week right now. So I just want to thank the food service, they've been doing a great job with that and I know that Michael oversees that program and Katie Faye has been great too. So thank you, Michael, and just thank you all of our food service workers for that effort.
We also got a grant for the packaging materials, is that right? Or a donation for the packaging materials? Did I see that?
We did, so I was going to talk about that tonight.
Okay, sorry, didn't mean to-
No, it's okay.
Deal of thunder, jeez.
So you guys have a copy of, probably don't have a copy of the presentation. I'm going to try to-
We do.
We do.
Do, okay. I was going to share the screen, but I don't see, I don't see that right now. So let me just-
Blue Moon's script, sure.
Get in the bottom now?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Disabled, Owen, can-
Oh, here it is, I just got it.
Okay, cool.
Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so every, every few years, we have to come in front of the school committee to get our school lunch price adjustments due to federal requirements and their adjustments at the federal level. So I'm just going to give you a quick overview of our current food service program. For revenue, we receive 15% of our revenue currently with, from the federal and state reimbursement program. 52% of our revenue comes from breakfast and lunch meal sales and 28% from à la carte sales and 3% from adult meal sales. And then we have a small portion, which is our catering, which we have about 2% our revenue comes from catering. On the expense side, we have about 46% of our expenses are payroll, which is normal, it's about 50% in other districts. Food and beverage cost is about 44%, paper supplies is about 4% and then we have about 6% in equipment and equipment repairs and a small portion on other, less than 1%. So part of the equity, paid lunch equity that's through the NSLP, which is the National School Lunch Program, is that we have to meet the guidelines that they set. So currently, the guidelines that are set by the National School Lunch Program is that our free lunch should be about $3.54 because that's what the reimbursement rates are. Reduced lunch, $3.14 and then paid lunch, we get about 45 cents on that reimbursement. So revenue from a paid lunch here in Medfield currently at the elementary level, if we took 45 cents, which is the paid lunch, and we added in the elementary lunches, $2.75, that would equal $3.20, which is under what the free lunch is, which is $3.54. And the requirement is that we have to at least be at the reimbursement rate for a free lunch in order to be part of the, to participate in the program. So moving forward, we're also seeing cost escalate. So as our bids are coming in currently, we've seen that food cost is expected to increase by 10% for next year. And that has to do because of the situation that we're currently in. We know that our labor cost is expected to increase by 2% and our paper supplies is expected to go up 4%, but that 4% could go higher depending on how we trend. So these are the increases that we're seeing for next year plus the requirement that we need to meet for our free lunches. And then, you know, I was going to go into more of what the, what we would like to do to improve. We want to make sure that we improve our software for our menus and there's equipment and other stuff that are coming to a life, end of their lifespan. So we have to look at those for our capital. So our current meal price is for elementary, $2.75 and our secondary lunch is $3.25. In order to meet those requirements, what the, what they do through the program is they take your elementary lunch and your secondary lunch, they add them together to get the reimbursement rate. So we're asking right now that we would have to increase our elementary lunch by 25 cents and our secondary lunch by 25 cents in order to meet those federal requirements. I'm going to stop here before I go to the next slide. Do we have any questions? Okay. So I did want to talk a little bit about, and Superintendent Marston addressed it, that currently during, during this time of school closure, our food service department has served over 3,500 meals since March 13, 2020. Over 700 meals have been delivered to residents in Medfield. And, and we're seeing, we are seeing those numbers increase in March. We served, I believe, 26 meals for the month of March and those numbers have increased as, as we have moved forward. So April was our largest month and it looks like currently May is going to exceed the number of lunches that we served in April. So we did go for a, a $5,200 assistance grant. We were awarded the assistance grants for $5,200 and that's helped with the packaging cost. I was also going to get into that through the CARES Act that the town received, we are eligible to go, to put in for reimbursement for our meals that we have served, not only for food cost, but also for labor. And the superintendent and I are actually working with the town administrator, Christine, to put all that paperwork together to help defer the expenses that we've seen in the last three months. So I can tell you right now that we're tracking those expenses and since March 13th, core-related expenses for food service have exceeded $30,000 and we are working with the town administrator and the, through the CARES Act to help those, to defer those costs that the school, the school committee and the school department has taken on.
So Michael, we're looking at this increase to begin in September, is that correct?
You're correct.
All right, I think, um, fair.
Okay.
Jess, did you want to say something else?
No, I don't know, are we, we're, we would take public comment after the full presentation, is that correct?
Yes, um, I think that this is, this is the end of the presentation, right? Readiness, we don't have any questions regarding this?
Yes, we do.
We do?
We have a Chris Potts question.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, sometimes you have to scroll all the way.
Okay, sorry. "How much money is abandoned in school box accounts each year? Either because of students graduating, moving, et cetera? What's, what happens to it if it's, if not refund, if no refund is requested, sorry?"
So our food service director will be reaching out to senior families on how to, if they would like a refund on any dollars that are banked into the, into their account. I can tell you, last year, it was less than, I want to say less than 2% of senior parents that requested a refund on their, on their banked account. Most of them like to have in the past, either put it towards their siblings, other children in the family, or have made a donation into the food service department.
Super great, Michael, thank you. Now, when was the last time we increased rates?
Two years ago.
Years ago?
Yeah, that's right, okay. Alrighty. Do we have any other comments, questions from school committee members before we take a vote?
I think that, also, I just want to clarify because I'm trying to remember, you really can't build up a bank more than about $80, right? Within the school bucks. They'll only kind of charge you for that amount unless you really, like, decide to, to put a huge amount in. Like, you have to opt in to putting in a much larger amount than that.
You have to opt in and some people opt in with, instead of putting, so there are different requirements that you can put in, such as- such as if the, you know, if my account drops to $5, you know, you can put in up to whatever amount that you want, but the parent has the say on what that amount is, right? So for instance, my children, you know, participate in the food service program here in Medfield, and, you know, once it drops down to $5, it automatically puts $40 back into their account.
I mean, that's kind of the thing that we do as well, but it's, so it isn't like people are really carrying a significant balance within there.
No, we haven't, we don't experience that, you know, it's, it's usually done where increments. Most, you know, families do smaller increments, and then when it hits a certain amount, it just deducts that from the bank account. So we are, we're working with families, you know, we always work with families, especially this time. But we haven't yet have had any parent ask for a refund when it came down to our food service. We've had them ask for refunds for other situations, but not for our food service program.
Okay, great, thanks, Michael, appreciate it.
I'd just like to reiterate how grateful I am that the food service department has delivered, or served over 3,500 meals, that's, and, and worked with the Council on Aging, correct?
Correct.
Um, so this is, this is wonderful, so thank you very much, and thank you to them. And at this point, I think we'll, we'll take, do we have a motion to, on the school lunches price increase for FY21?
So moved?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion introduced by Jess Riley, second by Leo Bram, and we'll take a roll call vote. Jess Riley?
Aye.
Leo Bram?
Aye.
Megan Glenn?
Aye.
Tim Knight?
Aye.
Anna Mae O'Shea Brook?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you.
Super. All right, any item, any other items since posting, Dr. Marsden?
Yes, Madam Chair, so I, I just wanted to go back to the COVID-19 and the COVID-19 committee that we talked about our last committee.
Yes, yes.
So as I had mentioned earlier, the commissioner had said to us not to go ahead and try to make plans without the guidance of the state, because that could be a, a problem for you if you do that. So what's happening is that the town is going to do a COVID-19 committee. Christine and I met and discussed it. We thought it might make sense that because the same people would be on both committees, if we establish one committee for the, the town and school, and that it'd be a subcommittee would work off of, work off of the, the school side. So if we had specific school issues that, that we wanted to address or deal with, we would do that as a smaller subcommittee instead of having the, you know, the whole committee. Because we felt like members of the Board of Health, Amy Colleran, Michael, I would be, so all the same types of folks that would be on both committees, that it would make sense if we did that together, school and town, and tried to work toward that. So she and I have met, and we're going to try to plan that out next week, if that makes sense to you.
Right, now, how about, I, I think it would be helpful to have a parent or two from the.
Absolutely.
Part of it, okay, good.
Yeah, so we still, we're still going to do what we had in terms of a subcommittee. So we'd have parents on there, get a high school student or, or middle school or both.
Yeah.
You know, we still want to absolutely do that. But we, but instead of doing two separate and duplicating efforts, we thought it made more sense if we were just one committee, and then the subcommittee with schools could just deal with some of the school-specific issues.
Super, just as long as everyone's included.
Absolutely.
Parents, okay, lovely, that's great.
And Jeff, do you know when the town, when that committee would be formed at the town level? Like, you know, I just want to make sure it doesn't slow it down.
Yeah, so we're looking at, meeting again next week after the long weekend and trying to get that established. So Christine and I have been just talking back and forth on it. So we're looking, I know she mentioned it at the Board of Health meeting as well, and got a representative from that board. That was last Friday.
Can we clarify that that's Christine Trierweiler?
Yeah, sorry, Christine Trierweiler, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
And now I'm going to mute because my landscaper just showed up.
All right, lovely, thank you very much. Oh, so Dr. Marsden, how are you going to recruit students and parents for that's, just to clarify?
Yeah, so we're looking at trying to get parents who are already engaged, whether they're on school site council. We thought that was a natural kind of fit for people that have already been engaged in, in school activity like that. So we're going to work with the principals and, and try to get some parents from site council.
Okay.
And same thing, we're going to just have, look at probably an open, I'll talk to the high school and, and Nat as well, and see, you know, what they think would be the best method to get high school kids on.
Yeah, if we could get a middle school kid.
Or a middle school kid, absolutely.
I think that would be really good. Yeah, super, thank you. So old business, Dale Street School Project, grade configuration, we've got superstar Christine Power.
So Madam Chair, Christine is here tonight. She, she did one slide the other night at our public hearing that was just, you know, really well attended, and a lot of great questions coming from the community, which we're really, she was really happy with. And I know that you've worked hard on that survey that is now out within the community as well. We emailed that to all parents directly, it's on our website, right on the homepage. As soon as you go on it, it comes right up as, as something to click on. And I know you've worked with the Council of Aging and others to, to get the word out on that. So we're really pleased that the, the broad range of opinions we, we're sure to get from this. And I don't know if you have anything else in terms of what you've done with the subcommittee before Christine comes on?
Yeah, no, I just, I think, I just want to reiterate what we all said on Tuesday night, how we genuinely want to hear feedback from the community. And so I think tonight's a great opportunity to take that deeper dive into that 3, 4, 5 option, and really, based on surveys, et cetera, take next steps appropriately.
Yeah, and I would say the other thing that you emphasized beautifully the other night was the fact that we are, we are fully aware of what's going on around us, and we understand that times are different right now, and that certainly when we started this program two years ago, it's different, and even when we started in December, it's, it's a lot different. So we're cognizant of that, we're cognizant of the economy and, and some of the difficulties that people are going through, and we're going to listen to the community, and, and, you know, that's, that's the best way to go about it. You know, there are, there are three signatures that have to be on those, on those forms, and that is the school committee chair, the board of selectmen chair, and the school superintendent. And, you know, I think it's important in my role to advocate what I think is best for the community and, and what's best for kids long-term. But if the town doesn't want that, then that, that's fine. I'm not going to, you know, stomp and stomp my feet and say I'm taking my ball and going home. If the town wants a 4, 5, and that's across the board, then that's fine, you know. But, you know, my responsibility to all of you and to all the kids in Medfield is to advocate for what I think is the best school for us going forward, so.
Yeah, absolutely, understood, understood, but we, yeah, it's just a different world. And I think we just have to be cognizant of that as well. And with that, and then we will also take questions after Christine's presentation, public input. So Christine?
Thank you for the opportunity. I had a opportunity to speak a couple days ago, and that was just a taste of the overall presentation that I'll be providing you today. So thank you for the time to share a little more into grade configurations and what the literature says about grade configurations. So I'm just going to share my screen if I could, or I can't. Owen, can I share my screen? Okay, great, let me see. There we go. How are you doing? Okay, great. So thanks, thanks so much for the introduction. My name's Christine Power, I'm the Director of Instruction and Innovation for the district. I'm also a parent and a resident of the town. So this is something that's near and dear to my heart in general, as both a parent as well as in my current role. Now, grade configuration. I was asked to do a review of the literature that's existing, currently existing about grade configuration. And if you went in and Googled grade configuration and researched, unfortunately, you're not going to find a lot. There is not something specifically about grade configuration, with the exception of there's been some work around middle school specifically about that, that tender age of middle school and going into high school, and some work on, just in general, K8 specifically, about, again, that eight to nine-year transition. So once I, I went to that and looked and realized there really wasn't that much, I ended up looking at the different domains of research that are currently in existence that, that inform grade configuration. This is something that's commonly done in research, whether it's just dissertation or any sort of larger research project, is to look specifically at the different pieces that make up the overall question. So in this case, it would be child development, brain science, social-emotional learning, curriculum studies, teacher education, and pedagogy, because each one of these relates in some way to the age and development of a child. Now, at all of these, at the core of all these are, is the concept of developmentally appropriate learning practices. Now, this goes back to Child Development 101, the first class that every teacher takes when they become a teacher, and it really talks about how a child grows and develops and how they learn. So just to put that out there to create a baseline here is that the concepts start with humans experiencing a variety of different developmental stages throughout their lives, and that these stages are uneven and varied. However, they follow typical patterns, and these typical patterns are typically aligned to chronological ages. Now, as anyone who's brought their child to the pediatrician, you've probably seen those charts. That's something similar and goes on to the, related to this brain science that talks about these developmental stages and how they're aligned to chronological ages. In sum, though, to, to pull this together, it's really important to realize that the environment in which a student learns incorporates these developmentally appropriate learning practices. That great teaching and impactful learning keeps in mind the actual stage and developmental stage and, and the growth of a child during that era. So to put that in straightforward terms, is that there is a relationship between the age or grade level and the child's developmental state, as well as the learning and teaching practices that are within the student's domain. So what they, how, how they learn, what they learn, how they're taught, they're all related. So I know we're speaking about a 3, 5 configuration, but I would be remiss if talking about a 3, 5 configuration without first going to early childhood. It is interesting, my experience, and I, I was in teacher development, teacher education for over 10 years, and this is something that is talked about and bantered about quite a bit amongst the elementary faculty, is that elementary is not the same across, even though many people think, oh, elementary, that can go anywhere from K to 6 or K to 5, depending on the grade configuration, that there are nuances within each grade level and something to be cognizant of. So here, I'm presenting just a couple of the larger theories and the larger concepts to help understand the elementary and actually the nuances within, which really divides up between early childhood and elementary. They're not one and the same, there's actually a difference. So to speak about early childhood, early childhood is defined by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, NACE, or organization, which is the preeminent organization within early childhood education. And that's defined as birth to 8. This is something that has been widely accepted, at least to the mid 80s, if not earlier. And this really acknowledges the unique cognition and social-emotional development of children of that particular age, birth to 8. Now, best practices in how teachers are, are, excuse me, how children are educated in the early childhood grades, which in, for this case, is pre-K through grade 2, is fundamentally different on how children who are older than that, or grades 3 and beyond, are educated. There is a difference in that, and that's something that I'll talk about throughout my talk today in terms of that's acknowledged through curriculum and through instruction. But to, to, to keep that in mind, that there is this bifurcation between early childhood and elementary. Now, learning environments are a combination of both learner-centered, knowledge-centered, and assessment-centered experiences, and these aren't always a transition. It's not as if that you start in a younger age and you start with learner-centered, and then you move towards knowledge, knowledge-centered entirely by the time you're in grade 12. It's not this necessarily a continuum, it's a combination of that. But the combination, so the amount of learner-centered versus knowledge-centered, would, would differ depending on the grade level. So knowledge-centered is something you would think of typically in a secondary environment, right? It's all about content, 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 that's what many people believe. However, from an education stance, actually, a learner-centered perspective is important, but may not be as much of a centered piece of it as it would be in elementary. So keep in mind that the, whether the focus is on the learner and having learner directed or having it is about not, knowledge gain, really does matter in the grades. And I will, I will unpack this further, I just wanted to lay out these concepts. So keeping these different concepts in mind, it's, it's pulling this together and seeing it, I see it impacting three different areas that will inform any decision on grade configuration within our district, within the 3 to 5. And those are to really look at these specific areas, instruction and staffing, curriculum, and child development. And I'll talk about each in my talk today. So in order to lay the groundwork and to, to really wrap our heads around what I am speaking about, keep in mind that there are different grade levels that are widely accepted, and these are the ones that we have here, pre-K, K, 1 through 2, 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12. Now, when I say early childhood, I want to be very specific. This is the birth to 8, or in this case, it's the grade, you know, age 5 to 8. And that, it will fall within the pre-K through grade 2 domain. So you may hear me say early childhood, you may hear me say either specific pre-K, K, or 1 to 2. And that's because although those are grouped together as early childhood, there are some nuances between those. However, the nuance isn't as dramatic as, for instance, the difference between early childhood and grade 3 to 5. So just to be clear, that I will be using terms early childhood, because sometimes it makes sense to keep that together, but sometimes because there are some differences, that pre-K, K, and 1, 2 will be teased out. So I, I mentioned the three different areas where it's impacting and, or has a potential to impact. And the first one I'm going to talk about right now is instruction. Now, instruction takes many different forms, and it's all about meeting the, the learner, where they are developmentally, and helping them understand concepts or different skills based on that developmental level. And so here's just a little bit, a glimpse of, this is no way comprehensive, and it cannot be. There are so many different instructional techniques that our teachers use. But just to get an idea or a taste of what it's like in a pre-K, K, 1 to 2, and 3 to 5 environment. Now, the pre-K, K environment is more experimentally based, modeling, adult modeling of concepts, and, and, and things to allow the student to engage with the world that's around them. So again, it's a lot of teacher-led with, with students giving feedback, and, and many times it takes to the form of how they engage. Now, that slightly changes when you get to grade 1 and 2. You have the concept of learning centers, and these are a, a way, it's a vehicle of how to engage, and that's something that is still continued. But then you have a growth in the level of independence that students have at this level, and they can start engaging in project-based learning, or having, being introduced to a concept or a question, and then unpacking the different pieces in order to learn more about that and in the process, learning deeply on any particular subject, or in, in, in great project-based learning, a combination of different concepts, such as, you know, a science-based project that may bring in mathematics and may bring in English language arts, et cetera. Now, is, again, that growth in the big piece is that independence piece. You have the project-based learning. At this point, students are really interested in being engaged in topics that are interested to them. They're also navigating complex peer relationships at this time as well, and they work well with peers. But there's also that, that piece of, of, of working with them, but realizing that they're not, they don't, they don't know it all, right? At that point, that around grade 3, they figure out like, oh, there's things that I need to learn. And I may not be the expert on this, but I can learn from this, I can also learn from my peers. It's a really complex sort of stew, in a very good way, I say that with love. And this is also the time that students start learning more and more and more independently. Now, a related piece, it's, it's instruction is staffing. Again, I, I hinted that my background, prior to being a longtime Medfield teacher, and then leaving to, to go in higher ed for about 10 years and coming back, is that I was the Director of Teacher Ed Programs and Practical Offices, and most recently at BC. And so keep in mind that staffing, especially Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, aligns their teacher prep work, their, their teacher preparation programs, and, and also that means the, the higher ed, teacher ed programs are highly delineated, they're highly. highly informed by these concepts and these grades specifically. So I give you here as an example, and something similar is on the DCE website, is what does ed prep, what does educator preparation look at different levels? And this is something that teases out within the licenses and the, the way to become a teacher in Massachusetts. So pre-KK, for to be a pre-KK teacher in Massachusetts, you would have to complete an approved accredited early childhood preparation program. Now, what does that mean? That's different from an elementary ed program. Pre-KK, the license is from pre-K to grade two, and that really focuses on a variety of different things. Now, all those many things in terms of some basic pedagogy and some of the, the child development piece, there are some course elements are the same. Where it differs is that there is a stronger focus on social emotional learning at that grade. Also, there's more focuses on early literacy and encouraging students to read. So it is different, and because the content, they need to attend to the specific developmentally, excuse me, development needs of those in that early childhood. So we have those two pieces. It's interesting enough also, because in symbolic in a way, that DCE realizes that early childhood is such a different experience, that in order to become a early childhood educator, you have to complete two practica. It is not enough to complete one, you would have to have it one in both either pre-KK, that's the first one, and the other one has to be grades one or two. And that's DCE indicating that those two grade levels are fundamentally different, and it's necessary for anyone obtaining a license, is that they have to have experiences in both, both one practica in pre-KK and the second practica in grades one to two. They also have a unique MTEL experience, so the content itself is different, that it's assessed in order for them to get their license. Now, a grade three to five, I just want to skip over grade one or two, because that's sort of an interesting beast right there, is grade three through five is elementary preparation. This is a fundamentally different license, and that goes from grades one through six. And that really looks at an older child. The methods that's taught are different, the, the, especially in literacy, but you see in other places as well, it's more of a broad understanding of, of students and their development across all the different domains, a little bit less focus on social emotional learning, although that is changing, that more and more institutions are prioritizing that. And it only requires one practica, and it's either in grade, it's grades one through grade five, they can, grade six, they can be placed anywhere, and it's a single practica. They do not get placed in any sort of pre-KK environment. They had taken their own unique suite of MTEL courses as well. Now, greater one to two, that's where the interest piece, I don't know if you heard me say the licensure, it's the pre-K, the early childhood goes from pre-K to grade two, the elementary license is one-six, there's an overlap in grade one and two. And that is, it gives the candidates a choice of going one or the other, and that's something interesting from a staffing perspective in terms of hiring, in terms of who would be eligible to become a teacher. But that's, the reason why I'm putting this out there, I'm sorry to go a little into the weeds here, is to really highlight the fact that the preparation of teachers is fundamentally different, whether you're looking at younger elementary kid, what we call elementary or early childhood kids, that, that pre-KK, grade one, grade two, is fundamentally different than preparation of teachers, grades one through six. So to pull this together, and just as my analysis is that, just want to share that instructional techniques are aligned to the different developmental levels of students, and they look really different between pre-KK, one to two, and three to five. In addition, the preparation of teachers reflects this difference, and how teachers are prepared in order to meet the unique developmental needs of their students. Grade configurations that are aligned to both teacher prep and developmentally informed instructional techniques will allow for targeted building-based professional development. Part of my current role right now is to, to develop teachers and to have them improve their instructional practice, and thinking about the child development as well as teacher, teachers, what they come to the table with and how they're growing as their own, in their own practice, it allows me to think about and implement site-specific professional development that will meet the students' set their needs. It's not a one-size-fits-all model for teachers. What I can do for elementary or grade one, or pre-K teachers, I'm sorry, kindergarten or pre-K teachers would look fundamentally different than a PD that I would do for grade four, grade five teacher, and that's because the students that they have are different. There would be many things that are the same, but some things would vary. The second thing I wanted to talk about is curriculum, and curriculum does look different across the grades, and I'm just going to give you a taste, I can go really deep here, but I will, I'm just, I'll give you just a taste of this, is that across the differences in curricula, either pre-KK, grade one, two, three, five, are different in terms of the expectations and how, and the, the different things that students learn, and it shows up differently in different places, but they are very much reflected in the mass frameworks, and this is some of the highlights I wanted to show you, and I'll talk a little bit more about some of them, I'll go deeper into one concept. Early literacy, this is the, how students learn to read, and there is a difference between pre-KK and one to two, that is more of a learning to read, you'll always hear that break, is learning to read, it's phonologically based, it's learning about sounds and learning, it's really phonics, and that actually transitions, that once they have those, those core skills around grade three to five, they start with the literacy, and they're now no longer learning how to read, they're learning, they're reading to learn. Thus, literacy instruction at that point shifts, and it shifts to more thematically based literacy, and there's a larger books, chapter books, et cetera, that go on from there. Math and science, math and science, you have the spiraling concepts, you have different things, and I have, actually, my next slide will talk about this and how this works, but you have some basic concepts that are building blocks, you'll hear this throughout math, and they inform across, and in science, because science is so linked to math in many ways, it follows a very similar pattern in some ways, but you start with some building blocks, and from there, once you have those concepts, you build and build and build and build and build. And how the mass frameworks are set up, they're actually broken down into these designations between pre-KK, one, two, three, five, the frameworks themselves align to these particular grade levels. Social studies, that also, it has, it's not as aligned in terms of specifically within the frameworks, however, it is the, you have the concept of social studies versus history. So it's the Massachusetts History and Social Studies frameworks, and those get teased as if they're one in the same, but they're fundamentally different. Social studies, a lot is about the individual and how they interact with the world, and that's when you have this growth, we have the early years, it's talking about the individual and then the family, and then it moves up to the neighborhood, and then it moves up to the community, and so that is how the student interacts with their larger world, and at that point, their world grows and grows and grows as they get older. It's very developmentally based, from pre-KK all the way up to grade two. This is when it switches from social studies to history, and this is, the history goes beyond that, and by history, all of a sudden, you start learning about you, from, from pre-K through grade two, you're learning about the student, or the students learning about themselves and how they interact with their neighborhood and their family and their community, and all of a sudden, in grade three, it's Massachusetts history, and it's learning things from a historical sense, it's a very different shift, and that happens right there, and it continues on through grade four and grade, grade five, where it's very much a history-based curriculum, it takes that direction all the way up to high So this is the example I wanted to show about the spiraling and what I meant by that, and this is something about the building blocks and how each, each concept builds upon each other, but in that concept, they're grouped together. So for instance, pre-KK, it's all about learning your numbers and number sense, your number alliance, and at that point, once you have those concepts now, you can move on to grade one and two, and grade one and two is very much focused on addition and subtraction. And again, the exposure happens, and then, once they do that, they master that, and they get that more level and a deeper learning on that, whether it's a double-digit addition, for instance, or going beyond that, but that happens, addition and subtraction is grades one to two. And from there, once that foundational concept is understood, then they transition grade three through five, and it's taking those concepts and taking another layer deeper. In this case, it is multiplication, division, and fractions, again, all related to addition and subtraction, and then it all goes back to number sense. But again, this is, I'm hoping you see the spiraling, the progression that happens. Now, this is fundamentally, in the mass frameworks, it is divided up this way, pre-KK, one, two, three, five, because those are related concepts. So again, here's my analysis, this is something that, just pulling all this together, is that curriculum is aligned to the developmental levels of all students, and therefore, it is grouped, it is different to pre-KK, one, two, three, five, and this is reflected in the Massachusetts frameworks. And also, keep in mind that grade configurations, and because they're aligned to specific frameworks, allows for me in my current position to really think thoughtfully about building-based professional development. If I'm doing something professional development about history and the new history social studies frameworks, it is, the frameworks would look different, three to five, it's more history-based versus, for instance, professional development at the younger grades, which is more social studies-based and more about the individual's interaction with their community. It also allows us to think about curriculum materials, library sources, et cetera, because again, the curricula is grouped in those discrete areas, pre-KK, one, two, three, five. The third piece to talk about is child development, and the literature indicates that students thrive in supportive environments that support developmental needs, and this is true throughout, that students thrive in places that they're valued and that they're supported. And so something to think about in terms of that is that early childhood is the importance of adult modeling and guided learning practice, students need to feel safe, and by having that adult there at that age and that developmental level, students feel supported and they can thrive. And three to five, it's all about that peer group and the complexity of the peer group as they grow and they get their own friends and they're moving away from that teacher. That teacher is important for guidance, but it's also that peer is so important, and so instruction again will, will align to that. It's also important at that point is you have the students, the individual, again, that grade three through five students are now starting to recognize that they may not be strong at all, they might be fantastic in some things and not in others, and so the curricula is really important to, is important to align that instruction as well, to make that particular learning experience meaningful to that particular learner. There's also literature, and I mentioned this in the beginning, that the literature suggests that there's, if there's continuity within the building, for instance, the length of time of students in the building, that it will support students' socio-emotional well-being. It talks about that transition piece, and again, there's not a lot of research out there, but the research that's there indicate that the more running room they have, and again, keeping in mind from a child developmental standpoint, especially in that intermediate year, that grade three through five, that you have students who are growing, they have the sense of identity, they're, they're, they're moving away from that adult modeling, and they're seeing who they are themselves, and to be in a school that embraces that and has that continuity is, it supports strong learning. Again, keep in mind that the, most of the research that is there really focuses on that transition from the middle school years, but if you can extrapolate, that's really what's talking about the length of time. And with that, I have wrapped up my presentation, but I'm more than happy to take any questions
Thank you very much, Christine, that was very thorough and well done, thank you always. I do have some questions, before we go to school committee members, I'd love to go through the Q and A and invite people to, to, to put in a question within the Q and A here, but Renee Howley has a question here. I'm wondering if Christine could spend some time speaking to the readiness for the first graders to transition to We洛克? We have heard a lot about third graders being ready to be with fourth and fifth grades, but not the first graders. My kids both transitioned schools at this point, albeit a bigger transition, but it was not easy for them either. Christine, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm speaking both as a person who works in the district and academic, but also as a parent. Transitions are tough, and they're tough on all kids, I would say, throughout the district, and it's just part of schooling, and something, again, it's, I wouldn't say it's just about the third grade and about to go to the fourth or fifth, I want to acknowledge that throughout the district. And so looking at a district level, we really have spent a number of, a number of hours focusing on socio-emotional learning throughout the district, and really thinking about creating environments that best support kids, A, and then B, once they've built up their identity and who they are within the schools, thinking of how best to transition them, and these are things that are going to be, they're not standalone classes or workshop experience, these are, that, these are experiences that are infused throughout the curricula, throughout the grade, and it's something that is more and more and more prevalent. Now, I mentioned that social emotional learning is something that's just embedded in early, the early childhood years, and that's something that is phenomenal, and it's something that is growing in the upper grades as well, but I would say to terms of the transition, it is, transitions are tough across the grades. I would argue that it is a challenge from grades, from grades one to two versus grades with my son going to eighth, going into ninth. We need to think as educators, and it's something that I've been in many different groups within our schools now, on thinking about not only supporting those learners in that when they reach that age, but thinking about thoughtfully on transitioning them well. I've been in a number, in this environment is especially unique in terms of what is happening with COVID, this is something that we meet regularly on, thinking about the transition, especially in this timeframe, but it happens throughout. So I want to acknowledge that I understand the challenge, and it's something that we are working towards and we will continue, and it's something that we need to think about, and we are doing already in terms of the professional development that supports the ways that we support individual learners and the way that we preview to the, to the students and the parents themselves.
Great, and I have another statement and question from Renee Howley. I am also interested in the potential impacts to the things like world language and, and the music program, where the transitions are natural with the current structure, with world language starting in second and instruments starting in fourth.
So thank you for sharing that. I would argue that those two domains actually align very closely to the things I've talked about, that concept of instruction and child development definitely apply in terms of how teachers teach, as well as supporting a child and their individual development. Speaking specifically about world language instruction, world language follows something, the frameworks or the proficiency guidelines, as they call it, of the American Council for the Teachers of Foreign Languages, and what that is, is a hierarchy, and it inserts that, it doesn't, it's not grade-based, it is, the student is going to learn wherever they start, whether they start in second grade in a particular language, or they start like my son did in sixth grade in French, that as students, we will, they will come into a particular grade and will be supported at the developmental level that they are, and that the curriculum and the experiences will grow, and that they'll gain proficiency. It is not tied to any specific grade level, therefore, I would argue, any sort of shift, whatever happens and whatever is decided, that world language would be able to adjust quite easily. With terms of music, music, the, the frameworks, the mass frameworks themselves are actually aligned closely to any proposed grade shift, if it happens, the frameworks are aligned pre-KK, one, two, three, four, five, six, and then it goes beyond that. So if there was a switch to a schooling configuration where you would have a pre-KK, a one, two, and a three-five school, the music curricula, the frameworks from, anyway, from the framework standpoint, is already largely aligned.
So I would also add that in my conversations with Jason, he's talked about the fact that if we have a three to five, what a great opportunity it is to have an additional ensemble, so that we would look at doing a chorus ensemble there for third graders, and you know, just have their exposure to a musical ensemble a year earlier than they normally would, so it's a benefit for them as well.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. I've got a statement from Chris Potts. The Center on Enhancing, yeah.
I think Renee actually had a quick question about the transition to K one.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, sorry. I didn't scroll down. Okay. Um, back to Renee Howley, back to my transition question, K one. This seems especially important when a child did do pre-K in Memorial, they will be moving after only one year.
I think perhaps Renee, did you mean when a child didn't do pre-K in Memorial as opposed to when they did do? Okay. Because if they did pre-K at Memorial, they would be there for two years, should we go to the pre-K, K.
So, you didn't do, not did do, sorry.
No, no, you, I think it's just a little bit of a typo, but I think I understand what she means. That if a child only did one year at Memorial as a kindergarten child, what would that transition be like then, after one year transitioning to a one, two school? I think that that's her.
Oh, well done.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. So, are we talking about, this is the case if a transit, if a switch happened, those kids would be caught in that one year, right? A single year, okay. That would be, it's unfortunate. Any sort of grade configuration, unfortunately, there'd be one year of that. What would happen in that particular case, if that is the case, is that we would provide extensive professional development and support and building into the school curricula, ways to support students in that transition. Again, it sounds to me, if I'm reading the question correctly, it would be a one-year shift, which again, it is not, it would be unfortunate, however, it is something that if we are aware of ahead of time, which we would be, we would be able to prepare for that shift in order to support, best support students.
Yeah, and if we had a pre-K, K building over there, we would have a whole wing of preschool, so we could expand on our current preschool programs. You're going to have a lot more kids attend preschool in Medfield versus going to private preschools. You know, we're going to have six classrooms that will be open with different models, depending on what parents want, and you know, try to get as close to a preschool for all models we could. So, it would be a two-year transition, like it would be for a lot of kids as well. But certainly, that one-year transition could be tricky for kids, and there are some kids that would do that.
I would venture to say that transitions across the board, the fact that we have so many transitions right now, is something that teachers have consistently cited, and parents and kids, as something that's very difficult for them. This, you know, but at the same time, they're able to be managed. I like the idea of being able to have a longer run when you're thinking about peer relationships and a child understanding themselves as somebody within a peer group, and being able to have that larger, longer amount of time with that group before you make that transition. I mean, so the three, five kind of fits that, although again, we always try to individualize the learning and the transition plan for every kid. So, that's.
Okay, great. Thank you. Now, I will go back to Chris Potts's first one. The Center on Enhancing Early Learning Outcomes launched a nationwide P three initiative roughly four years ago to lead sustained improvements in early learning outcomes. Massachusetts is one of just a few states considered to be a leader in this initiative, and reps from Mass Desi are actively involved in the P three effort, as well as this long list of other experts. C E L O has fundamentally aligned grades preschool to three together for child development reasons, and especially social emotional learning. What teachers have shared is that the rationalization for grade three, four, five configuration is based more on readiness for standardized testing versus truly looking at the third graders' unique developmental and social emotional needs, which are so varied in grade three. Prep of teachers and MA curriculum frameworks are aligned to standardized testing too, versus mindset and maturity of children who are still very young. A grade three, four, five configuration just perpetuates the spiraling down of love of learning. What is your reaction to this C E L O P three initiative?
Well, I'm going to pick that, Christine, or?
Yeah, I can, you wanted to start, and I can build. Go ahead.
Okay, so I mean, so my perspective on that initiative, you know, it's out of Rutgers, and I have a, you know, surface-level understanding of what they're doing. But again, you know, we could certainly find a lot of other different initiatives out there that, that say that the pre-K two and the three, four, five is, you know, the way to go. I'm just, I'm concerned when I see things in writing like, I'm just trying to get my glasses on here. What teachers have shared is that the rationalization for grades three to five configuration is based more on readiness for standardized testing versus truly looking at third graders' unique development. So, I get a little concerned when I see, because that, that sounds to me like Medfield teachers have done that. And, you know, I know we've had conversations and we've had surveys with teachers, and that has never been something that teachers have shared with me or Christine or the principals. So, I just don't want to perpetuate something that isn't real. So, if it's general, the teachers that are involved in that initiative, that might be something, but that's not, from my understanding, something that Medfield teachers have expressed. So, I don't know, Christine, do you have something?
Yeah, it's something you mentioned that Massachusetts is one of the few states to be considered a leader and initiative. In preparing this talk with you today, I consulted colleagues in the early childhood departments of the universities with whom I was previously attached. And we just talked about the teaching and learning and the, what I was about to present, and the information that I got from them was that it is mindful, really thinking about an early childhood center specifically. Very excited about the pre-K, K possibility, as well as for us to acknowledge that learning and teaching is fundamentally different from grades one to two versus three to five. So, from them, and again, my colleagues that with whom I've spoken to, consulted with prior to presenting this with you, would probably say something a little different than the information from the C E L O, but I am interested in reading more about that study.
Lovely. Thank you. Next one from Chris Potts. School transitions from one school to another are safe and healthy transitions because they are supported by caring adults. The current two school transitions have helped to build resiliency over the long term. I haven't heard from any of our graduates that the transitions were difficult for them. In fact, they liked being in smaller school environments. All right, so that's a statement. Chris Potts, another statement. Eight, nine-year-olds are the same age everywhere. It's not unique to Medfield. Teachers in multiple districts have been calling for a stop to pushing children to grow up too fast and dial, whoa, and dial back on all the pressures.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just respond that I think that our teachers have done a wonderful job at every level, handling and working with students' socio-emotional needs. And, you know, I'm proud of the work that our teachers do and proud of the work that they have done, especially in the last four or five years around this area, and they continue to do. So, that's, that's been a focus, and all the teachers know that, the parents know that, so I'm proud of the work they're doing.
Beautiful. Alrighty. Any comments from school committee members?
No, I appreciate, oh, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, beyond the gratitude, I have to, Christine, for putting this together.
Thank you very much.
Very much so. I think it was very well thought out, and I do appreciate a lot of these issues I have thought about and tried to understand. I appreciate you elucidating so many of them.
Okay, so Chris Potts just wanted to reiterate, our teachers are awesome. I never said it wasn't. I wasn't proud of them. Understood.
No one was insinuating that either. I mean, I think it's hard to, it's hard to be proud of teachers than advocate for school choice, because there, you know, there's a huge tension between those two, and if you look at the MTA stuff out there, no one in MTA wants school choice either, because you're taking away, in theory, you're taking away jobs from other teachers because you're taking their students away. So, again, there's just a natural tension there with some of these narratives, and it gets a little frustrating.
Alrighty.
I just wanted to thank Christine too, and for sharing your expertise and just the level of knowledge that you're bringing to this. And, I mean, it just seems to me that the way that our grades are configured now, that having the, all the students that are in, say, first grade together in the same building, and grouping all of the teachers with their very, like, they have the same licenser, and they are all teaching first grade, that's the best way to do it in terms of professional development. And it just seems like we have that in place, and now if we could just align the grades the way that Desi and other research shows is the best way, it would be a really perfect system. So, thank you for highlighting all that for us.
No, thank you again for the opportunity. I want to reiterate, our teachers do a phenomenal job, and these are some of the things that I have unpacked a little bit, of just talking about things to think about. However, the research, and especially the licenser and educator prep, really lend itself to a three, five grade alignment.
Thank you, Christine.
Super. Thank you again. I just want to reiterate that we'll be talking about this at our next school committee meeting, and we're really going to be digesting a lot of the survey results as well to help guide us. Alrighty, FY twenty-one budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as you know, Monday night, we were at the warrant committee meeting, and there was a review for the Board of Selectmen, the Warrant Committee members, and the School Committee on some of the issues around the FY twenty-one budget in response to the lack of revenue and/or projections from the state. I know the state has lost billions, literally billions, since this has started. So, there's a lot of numbers flying around the state right now, both at the superintendent level, I know at the town and town manager level as well, where associations are looking at what the reductions could be in state aid. And I know that the approach that Medfield is taking makes sense. We're looking at implementing for a 10% reduction in state aid, and that was shared with us on Monday with some of those numbers. But I want to just go through a little bit, kind of historical this year in the budget season, how we've, where we've come from and where we are right now, what impacts that could be to our students and our teachers and in our whole school community. So, on the school committee approved budget was an increase of 4.02%. So, that increased request over FY twenty was 1,465,0275. So, that was the request that we had, and remember, we had conversations around that being just about a level service budget. So, and we've talked about level service budgets in our public hearings before. Level service, you know, same faculty, same teachers, same staff, same programs. We did a couple of additions here and there. We had some increased costs with special education that we're including in that as well. But that's essentially level service. We weren't asking for the world at that point. So, the town balanced budget is one that, through the conversations we've had with Warrant Committee, reduced our budget by 915,000. We know a couple of meetings, we've gone through that, where Michael and I have gone through every single reduction that we've made to get to this point. And that left us, after that reduction of 915, that balanced budget version is a 1.51 increase with only an increase of 549,000 over fiscal year twenty. So, that was the second rendition in kind of where we are right now, as far as where the Warrant Committee sees us in the balanced budget scenario. Then we look at the level-funded budget. So, level-funded budget would come in place if we went to a 1/12 budget for the town. And level-funded would be the exact same amount of money that we had for FY twenty in our current fiscal year right now, and that would be a reduction of 1,465,0275. So, that takes all of the increase that we put in for the 4% increase, removes it all, and gives us the same amount to work with that we had in FY twenty. So, obviously, very problematic to be in that situation of level funding. So, we asked for a level service, now looking at level funding, which is a 0% increase in a cut of over 1.4 million. So, based on the revenue reduction that we heard on Monday, that would bring that number down even lower. So, we look at those projections, and Michael and I worked through those, and looking at an additional reduction of almost 300,000 on that. So, that gets our total reduction, if we were to go into this scenario, of over 1.7 million dollars. So, I mean, just let that sink in for a sec. Reduction of a level service, so level service, same programs, same people, everything the same, and we're going to cut 1.7 million dollars out of that. And think about what that does to our school district, what it does for opportunities for our kids, what it does for our staffing. So, you know, it's really problematic, and I think that, you know, we're going to look at the next couple of weeks working on what that looks like in terms of reductions of staff, personnel, non-personnel, and try to bring you some scenarios on June 4th that we can work through and see what makes the most sense for you as a school committee. You know, one of the things that I've seen in situations like this, I was a superintendent during the Great Recession in eight, nine, and something we may want to consider as a school committee is to just reach out to the Board of Selectmen and have some sort of agreement or a written agreement that says that when the chapter seventy money is allocated for our school district, because that is state money earmarked for schools, that we receive all that. I think that's a really important agreement that we have as a community. I think it's been understood for a long time, but I also think that given the situation we're in right now with 1.7 million potentially, not, we don't know if that's going to happen right now, but that's based on Monday night's numbers, that we have some sort of agreement that all chapter seventy money goes to the district. And I think that's, I think it's fair. I think it makes sense. You know, and I've had some success with that in the past, so I'd like to just throw that out for your feedback and your reaction, and see if you think that that makes sense. I guess, one, reaction to what we're talking about in terms of numbers, which are pretty scary. And two, reaction to maybe getting some sort of agreement with the Board of Selectmen. And I'll be quiet.
Well, one, the reaction, it's unbelievable.
I think all of our jaws dropped. We understand how bad it is. But I think our jaws, all collectively, Warrant Committee, administration, selectmen, we all were just shocked by how much we now have to cut again. And I know that the Warrant Committee and the selectmen are committed to not asking the town for an override this year, and I understand that, you know, an operating override would last forever. And that's, that's difficult, and it's a difficult time to even think about that. I do actually have one quick question. There are other monies that we, we look for reimbursement for, from the state that go automatically to the town, much like the chapter seventy. So, any kind of Medicaid reimbursement that we get, which we apply for and we pay for the application, but then we don't, we kind of just generally hand that on to the town. Is there any thought that perhaps that would be an additional part of that understanding between the selectmen? And kind of where was that last year? I'm not recalling the.
So, I'd have to look to see what the actual number was last year, but I will say that Medicaid, because of the new regulations the federal government has put on, has really created problems for school districts. There are many school districts that aren't even doing it anymore. They're not going through the, as they say, the hassle. I mean, I think it's important for us to do it. I think that it does take a little bit of time away from our staff, but it's money that's out there for the district that goes unrestricted to the town's general fund. So, I think it's important for that partnership with the town. You know, I hear colleagues talk about, well, we never see it. Well, you kind of do, because, you know, the town allocates money for you. So, in some way, in shape, or form, it does come back to you. So, that's why I've always felt like it was an important thing to do. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to quote the number, because I don't want to say the wrong number, but it's not substantial. It's under 50,000. It's not a huge amount of money, especially now that the rules have completely changed in Medicaid from the federal government, which is really, really a problem. And I just want to add too, as far as the CARES Act, you know, Michael talked about that earlier, the way that is structured right now is absolutely ridiculous. So, in '08 and '09, we got America ARRA money. I forget exactly what it stands for. Restoration Act. I forget how it, anyway, we got that money as a school district and a town, and that came right to us, and that really filled those gaps that we had with chapter seventy that were happening in revenue for the community. The way the CARES Act is set up right now, it's, the mechanism is reimbursement. So, they've allocated 1.1 million to the town of Medfield right now, and they're asking the town, and there's a small part of the school. And they're asking the town, and there's a small part of the school department, as Michael had shared before, to actually apply for reimbursement through a grant process to COVID-19 expenses. It makes absolutely no sense to structure it that way. It should be structured where that 1.1 million is used to offset revenue loss and make communities whole and make school districts whole. And I I had a conversation with Denise Garlick yesterday and also with Sean Newley, just to express that this is, this is really ridiculous. It doesn't, it's, as Denise said, it's being used as a weapon instead of using, you know, you being used to help communities. And it just doesn't make any sense. So we're hoping we're going to get some sort of support from the legislature locally and certainly at the federal level to just look, just take a look at the parameters and the guidance around that and make it work for communities, because right now it's not working for communities. You know, right now you're looking at the town putting in for additional police officers up at at the transfer station, you know, to make sure folks are socially distancing or up at the state hospital or 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 some costs that they had for PVE. That's not going to be 1.1 million. So it it it's almost like the the money's out there on paper, but you can't access it. And that's not helpful for us at all. So there there has to be some stimulus that comes out of this that helps us beyond, you know, sending people a check in the mail. There has to be something because if not, we're not the only municipality that's going through this right now. Unfortunately, we started at $900,000 in the hole before all this hit. So we're kind of in a in a worse situation than other places, but many, many school districts got the news that we got on Monday this week as well. So I've been talking with my colleagues on that and it's just, it's extremely frustrating because you know, we we need to, we need that support from the state right now. They, you know, both Sean and Denise did say that, you know, they're, they know that their their focus right now is to support local aid and and that's both for schools and for towns. So that, and we make up a bulk of that local aid. So if there's $8 million that comes out of local aid for FY21, you know, we're getting six, six and a half of that. So it's a huge chunk for us. And although on the overall budget is not a lot in a situation like this, if they cut 10%, it's enormous for us. So I think we got to, you know, work, continue to work toward trying to, trying to tease out what the actual numbers are and what what it's going to look like. The frustrating, there's, there's many frustrations in this process. But the frustrating part is what is our job going to look like next year? What is school going to look like in September? Because you can make some decisions based on that if you know that, and we just don't know that yet. We won't know that until the middle of June. So now we got pushed, town meeting pushed out to the end of June, if that even happens. So that could be a fall. And then we then we're in our 1/12 budget. So there's just lots of unknowns at this point. So we're going to, as I sent an email to the staff today, just as the COVID-19 changes every day, so doesn't the budget landscape? And I think that, you know, we have to be a little patient, but you know, I I said at the Warrant Committee meeting two weeks ago, I'm going to say it again. I I just feel like the school is is being disproportionately cut in this. I know that there are, you know, some people live and die with a 75-25 rule. I I don't think it's a good thing for us right now. We've looked at other communities and that's not the proportion that that school districts are getting cut right now. So you know, we we probably need to have additional conversations with the Board of Selectmen, the Warrant Committee on this. And and just see if we can at least this, the second half of this one point, potentially 1.4 million, potentially that, we look at the proportional cut on that because 75-25 isn't going to cut it. I I can't imagine this community wants to dismantle a school district by cutting 1.7 million. We know that our budget's at 80% staff. We know that. And and I I say it tongue in cheek, but yeah, we've counted the paperclips. We've made those we've made those cuts. And, you know, we need to, we need to go through this again, but we need to have the the community understand that that we're really getting slammed there, really getting slammed.
Yeah. You know, now the 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 Warrant Committee's warrant hearing for the year is on Tuesday. And that is so that they can do their 30-day obligation before this June 27th all town, a town meeting. But I don't, I mean, are we actually going to be at the point where we could have a town meeting? I know I'm, I almost feel like the phased reopening at this point is such a moving target. And it's almost impossible to be able to tell whether we'll be able to really actually have a town meeting on June 27th. I mean, I just don't know. And I almost feel like a lot of these cuts that we have been asked to make are being being rushed on the sake of expedience for a town meeting that I'm not quite sure can actually happen. But I think that we've all expressed that and I and I do understand that we are all in this boat together. Nobody in town is thinking that, you know, they're getting off easy. But I think when we are asked to make the level of cuts that we're expected to make to the number of employees affecting the number of students that it affects to to try to vote in these cuts within just essentially a few days or a week is is not responsible. And it's really hard for me to kind of justify that one way or the other. Does anybody have any thoughts about that in particular, or can we talk a little bit about timing on this? Anyone?
It's just so hard to wrap my head around, really, quite frankly, you know, these cuts, these, that means people. Yeah. I did have a question for you, Jeff. Your second part, your second question was the the MOA for the, or MOU. MOU, MOA? Yes, thank you. Now, is that, have we ever had to do that in years past? Do, I mean, is that?
Not, not to my knowledge. I know that there was an MOU that the Selectmen had generated a few years ago that we just never, you know, we never got signed by either us or I think member Chris Morrison had mentioned that he didn't think it was necessary at that point. That's the one that had that we wouldn't, we wouldn't commit above a four.
Right, okay, yeah.
You know, that that whole thing, so.
Never happened. I remember that distinctly.
I mean, I I think it's, I think it's just a conversation to reach out and see if they'd be interested in in having something like that. I mean, I don't just good practice in a situation where we're looking at revenues that are declining and you know, the 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 chapter 70 is earmarked to the schools, just to make sure that that we we get all that, all those funds. It's going to be really important to us this year.
Well, I think that would be a fair exercise to at least reach out.
Do you do really expect that the Selectmen wouldn't do that unless we had a written agreement?
Not at all. No, not at all. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think they ever have. I don't think that's something they would ever do. I know that. Yeah, just normalize it. I mean, I have no expectation that they would do something like that. It does happen in other communities. Question about that, but I think it's, you know, just an agreement that we have. I mean, I I feel like I wish we had an agreement on what these reductions would be percentage wise, right? Because I just feel like, you know, in January, we got handed a million dollar cut. And, you know, I I just, I know other communities have have agreements around that too. And and, you know, I shared what I, what the percentages were. I don't have it in front of me, but the one that I did highlight that night was Mansfield. Again, it was a similar structure as us. I will say they do have a three, four, five school, I believe. I'll throw that out there. You know, they do, yeah. Go figure. So, you know, that, they have that, but they also have a town, a town-based school district. So you really can't compare what we're doing to, say, Dover Sherburne, because that's a regional school system. And that whole, the finances around that are just very, very different, you know, they're actually their own town. Whereas we work closely with the town on all of our expenses. So they were having cuts there and then they were, they were splitting the cuts 50-50, town and school. And even though that the overall budget in Mansfield was 70% school and 30% town, their approach was to do a 50-50 split. I'm not saying that's what we have to do. I'm just giving an example of what other communities have are doing and have done. I, it just felt arbitrary to me. So that's, that's why I brought it up at the Warrant Committee meeting and why I bring it up again tonight.
All right. So many unknowns.
So we we feel like, you know, if we, on that June 4th meeting, if we give you a series of different scenarios of what could happen. In the past, we've, we've done things like look at tier one cuts, tier two cuts, those kinds of things.
Please.
And I think it's important. I mean, you, you guys need to have you know, choices here. You know, it's important that you have choices and and, you know, Michael and I will lay those out for you and you know, do whatever you think is is best, but we'll make our recommendations and our scenarios and we'll go from there. You know, my sense is by June 4th, we're probably going to have different numbers. You know, I know that Christine's working hard at that, that 1.4 million to get that down. So I'm sure we'll have different numbers on that. It won't be a full 1.4 million. I'm sure it'll be lower by that point. Because I know that she's, she's got a few things that she's working on. So Christine Truyliler, I'm saying is the, and not Christine, just so.
But it's interesting. What do you say, you know, choices? I really feel like we don't have any choice here, you know, in terms of those cuts, what that equates to. I hear what you're saying, but I also feel like our hands are tied.
Well, I mean, I think we can push back a little bit if you want. I mean, we can push back. You know, at the Warrant Committee, we push back and on the town side too. I think, you know, Michael has, has had conversations and in his, his concern is that it's a lack of revenue, right? It's a lack of revenue coming in the town and that's, that's what's causing this imbalance. So it it was an imbalance before COVID-19 and it, it just got magnified after that. So Michael, you want to chime in at all?
Yeah, I mean, we've gone, we, at the last two days, we spent just going through all the numbers and on the school side to try to get different scenarios for the school committee so we can prep for June 4th. And we're trying to work with the Town Administrator Christine. I know we probably are going to meet tomorrow morning to go through different options on town side with you know, with where they feel that the, that they can massage the numbers a little bit and try to bring that 1.4 million dollars down. I mean, it it's hard. It's because we're in, you know, May and approaching June and we don't know, we don't have guidelines yet either from, you know, the state finance department, nor do we have guidelines yet from, you know, DESI. And and that's, that's the hardest thing because we'll, we'll put all the different scenarios together, just as Superintendent Marsden said. But there might be options out there that might be better depending on what those guidelines happen, right? You know, if if we're doing remote learning in September, you know, we might guide you in one direction. If we're going back in September, we have to guide you in a different direction. And that's the hard part for us. I mean, we have these scenarios that we're playing with, right, to make sure that you guys have these options, but it it's going to be driven by the guidelines.
The other, the other deep concern I have is that not only do we not know what's going to happen in September right now, but quite frankly, by June, no matter what they say is going to happen in September, we have no idea what's going to happen in November, January, March, and that our costs and our needs will in some ways fluctuate probably more, very few places will they be less. And to continue to provide a continuity of education in the best way possible for the period of time that that we are able to have our kids in our schools for the amount of time that we're able to have our kids in our schools. You know, in a perfect world, we would have more funding to be able to be that flexible. But when you have less, it it becomes that much harder to make sure that we're, it just takes that much more effort to make sure that we're getting that we're, we're doing the work that we need to do, that we're obligated to do. And and these are awful decisions. And and some of them have been hard to figure out where they've come from initially. Now I know where we are post-COVID and in terms of the budget numbers and what the state revenue is looking like right now. I mean, I think that in the state, what Representative Garlick said last couple of weeks ago was that in 2008, our what our state revenue went down by, you know, $2 billion. And at this point, we're looking between four and eight or four to six, sorry. So that this is kind of in terms of revenue in the short term, hopefully in the next couple of years, much worse than that. But at the same time, we need to be able to, we don't know what's going to happen with stimulus. We don't know what's going to happen federally. We don't know any of these things. It's really hard to sit with that ambiguity.
To your point, Jeff, so we, in two weeks, if we find out something about stimulus and what that's going to look like for both the school and the town, the the scenarios that we give you are very, very different than they are today. You know, it's, it's, and also to your point, FY22 is probably going to be worse than this. And you know, I'm not a doom and gloom on this kind of thing, but basically it's just pure mathematics. I mean, based on the fact that in FY20, which really drives FY21, the state was able to have all the revenue from July all the way to mid, mid-March. Right? If this pandemic that we're in now carries on longer than, say, next spring, now we're looking at FY22 being a problem because none of these from March all the way into almost a full year of lost revenue at the state level, which is going to be extremely problematic. You know, so we're going to get the local level, I mean, the local level, you're already seeing it now with the fact that that new growth is going to be down for this year, which is, you know, a component of what, what revenue the town has. Excise taxes down because less people are buying cars at this point. Like all these things that we just don't think of. Retail is down because people aren't going out shopping. So all these, they just snowball and become a larger problem for not just FY21, but FY22 as well.
Right. The other concern that I have is that we are in this really uncomfortable place in which we are having to make long-term historic recommendations for the good of our town 20, 30, 40 years from now. And that it is a separate road. Dale Street is a separate road. The building project is a separate road and a long-term proposition. But it is necessarily impacted unfortunately by the uncertainty of the next two years. And I think it takes an enormous amount of of analysis and discipline to think about, do I worry about the next two years, which are hard, while having the hope for the best thing that we can do for our town for the future? And what does that look like? And when we're talking about a Dale Street school, when we're talking about municipal building, when we're talking about the future, we really do have to hold it as the future. Because if we look at the needs that we have in the future with short-term eyes, we will be in the same place in 10 years in many ways. At the same time, we cannot be hanging on to the magical thinking that there will be a vaccine that is effective and widely distributed within six months. I've heard a lot of people say that that's not going to happen. Right? That is not what the science shows us. So we have to be very careful about how we're making these decisions. And it's, and it's hard to hold both of those things, but I think it needs to be put out there. That, that the Dale Street building and the needs we have for the future and the short-term extreme discomfort can be two different things. And we have to hold hope for the future. So.
Yeah, I I just, in the Q and A, I do want to allow a question from Bonnie Ren Burgess, who was the MTA president. She says here, a couple of questions. I'm still wondering why school committee did not take stronger action with initial news to reduce the budget by, by 1 million before COVID-19. The economy was roaring. Now we're facing almost the same again.
All right, actually, can I answer that?
Yeah, please.
I just want to make sure that we don't get this all mushed together.
Okay.
One of the things, Bonnie, and I'm so glad you asked. These are great, great questions. One of the things that has happened in the last few years in town that, that we passed and that is part of a larger town financial strategy is that the Selectmen passed a financial policy that was meant to help us rein in the amount of free cash spending that had been happening. Because it was very, it was coming very close to impacting our ability to borrow money. And it was putting us in kind of bad straits in terms of best practices. Bad straits in terms of best practices. And that was, and so they put a financial policy in saying that we must put in a certain amount towards our. Retirement obligations. We must put in a certain amount toward our um. Toward our free cash so that we have a cushion for times just like this. Um, and that those. Those um. Specifications and those requirements. Are very different than what Medfield had done previously because before this, we have. For about twenty years had kind of a pot of free cash. That was out there because we were getting kind of continuous MSBA reimbursements for for the high school. And uh, middle school projects and please, Michael and Jeff, correct me if I'm getting small parts of this incorrect. Um, so free cash is no longer quite as free as it once was. And actually, I'm incredibly grateful that we did pass that six percent or six point one five, one four percent override. Because I cannot imagine how much worse things would be now. Uh, if if we hadn't. At the same time. I she asks why we didn't take stronger action. I think that um. We have been working very hard to determine whether we felt that that. Nine hundred thousand, which we actually did end up. Uh, lowering to some extent uh, through negotiations. Where that initial number came from. And I think we figured it out and it's a long, long story. At the same time, that is exactly around the time that we got that number in early to just before COVID March. Then then COVID came along and all of a sudden we are in an entirely different world. And sometimes. The money you have is the money you have, whether you push back on it or not. I do think that we should. Work as hard as we can to make sure that our schools. Are supported. I know that Jeff and Michael and Christine are working together as a team to really try to figure this out. And I am very willing to continue to ask the questions that we've been asking. About how this happens. But at the same time, I also think that as a town, we have to figure out a way to row through all of this together. Um, because there are people out there who are hurting and I I don't feel. I personally, and we can talk about. Everyone else here and but. My current personal opinion is that to ask. Our town for an operating override that would stay on the books forever. Um, as opposed to. Coming in and it. And asking for a debt override at some point for whatever our new school will look like. I don't think that we can ask people for more money right now. We passed overrides. Uh, we, the town passed overrides throughout the entire uh, recession years. Every single year there was an override. Um, and that was hard for people, but this is even more instantaneous. And even more traumatic. Than than that financial crash was. And I think that if we are going to be thinking about. Going to our citizenry, citizenry and asking them to support more money. We need to be very thoughtful about how that is and we can't make it reactive. Right now. So I think we need to work within the revenue that we have right now. And. Do our best to advocate for our kids, but everybody is hurting. There are no great answers right now. There are just no great answers. And we can't kind of magically think that that if we had worked just a little harder or just a little bit of this, it would truly make an enormous difference. Within the numbers we're looking at. Now, I'm I'm very open to hear from the rest of the committee on what your thoughts are around that. But as I've sat through many, many warrant committee meetings and written. And spoken to and had some very strong conversations with a lot of people. That has been my kind of end. Thought. We can advocate, we can ask. But in the end, it's all of us together. And we need to be strategic about. How it is that we ask and what we're thinking of and hope for the future.
I'd like to continue with um, the rest of Bonnie's um, question here. Sorry. Thank you, Jess. Um, it's not easy, really. Um, has school committee recognized um, the money for unemployment will cost the district if there are R I Fs? Yes.
We have given those numbers to the town. That would be what the town, uh, the town. Unemployment insurance would be paying that and there is cost to that and I've been, I I think. And I think Michael and Jeff have. Been very um. Specific about what those costs would be. Uh, they obviously.
Yeah, we sure we shared those a couple of meetings ago, what that impact would be in um, the overall cost and then if there were some reimbursements from. The CARES Act, what they would cost the town, but uh, we've absolutely um, shared that information.
And and the um, her number three question is um, you've just stated you won't be requesting an override. So what kind of actions will you take? To replace funds?
I think that every municipality in the country right now is asking that. But what kind of funds are there actually out there right now? If we think about the amount that our GDP has plummeted. That uh. The stock market has plummeted, that the traditional avenues for revenue for our municipality. Are essentially taxpayer revenue with some grants from the state. We are obviously looking at every single. Area the town is, and I feel as they're very committed to this and I've seen an uptick even when things were quote good. Um, that that has been something that Christine has been advocating for in a far more assertive way. But sometimes there just isn't more money out there right now. We have to figure out how we work within the resources that we have. Right now, because I I couldn't go out and say. You know, I'd like to um, increase the restaurant tax because I know that you're only going to be able to have half to a third as many people in. And you'll only be able to do that for. You know, six months of what your normal business year would be, but I'm going to increase that. Or I'm going to increase your excise tax. Or ask you for more this, these are decisions that need to be made over a long term and certainly longer than the period that we have right now. And I don't think that um. I mean, I I think that there's also a very good possibility that we are because of social distancing. Because of the caution that we have to exercise, we will not be making the same revenue for rentals. For facility rentals. We will not be making the same revenue on any number of fronts. So. I want to assure you that. That we are thinking about how do we replace funds? Right now. It's incredibly difficult. How do you replace funds? Because every part of that comes on the back of of a human being right now. And everybody is taking a hit and some people are taking bigger hits than others and it's it's awful, Bonnie. It's awful. But this is temporary awful. Hopefully, we will find some long-term good.
Anyway, can I just say a couple of things?
Please.
Okay, thank you. So um. Like Jess said, I I mean, right now there's three buckets. The town has three buckets. They have state aid, which they're um, looking at it. Currently a ten percent count. They have new growth, which is uh, projected at a twenty-two percent decline. And then they have local receipts, which is projected at thirteen percent decline. Um, so those are the three buckets that the town has for revenue sources currently and. Um, and the projections from the state and 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 from, you know, the federal government and what they see. Um, that's what they're projecting for uh, decline in revenue. The the last thing I was going to say is. It's going to come down to what is the federal government going to do? For some type of stimulus package that will uh, help communities with the revenue flow or revenue loss. And I think um, until that happens. It's hard for us to say what other resources does the town have. We know. Because every community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and across the the nation is going to see revenue loss. And if those three buckets of of money that the town has are declining, the only way we can see some relief. Is if the federal government. Decides to put money into revenue loss for communities across the country.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Jess, for addressing that as.
I just wanted to reiterate some of what Jess had said.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that both Jess and Megan are part of the budget subcommittee.
And 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 piggybacking what Michael just said too, it just. I feel uneasy and. Just. I guess uneasy is the word that I'm going to use to describe, heartbroken, to make such drastic decisions, not knowing. How the future plays out. Um, you know, because these are life-altering decisions and. I can't stomach making those decisions really without having. All the information, but I don't know when we're going to get the information. So I'm kind of at a loss. That's 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 where I'm sitting right now. And so that's why I'm uneasy.
Yeah, I think we're. And again, we we all live in this enormous state of ambiguity right now about everything, about our own personal incomes, about our families, about our health. About our kids, about our education, about our tax base, about all these things. And and a lot of it has to do with that. These are the times where we have to be. Hopeful for the future and deal with the reality that's in front of us. So we're as patient as possible. Until we cannot be patient anymore, until we absolutely have to make the decision. But we have to always know our options and. And obviously, we will be talking to the town and Dr. Marsden and Michael will be giving us. Their best scenarios based on their professional opinions. About how uh, we get through this one. And we try to stay as flexible as we can. And that's about the best we can do.
I I would just comment on the same, the, you know, the. Mike and Jeff and his team, they will come back with all the different scenarios and we'll grind this out right down to the final twelfth hour. Um, because that's the way we have to operate right now and that's that's unfortunate, but that's just the way we have to operate. Um, and I'll echo what Jess was saying that it's um, optimism is difficult to have at this moment in time, but at the same time, this is not. This is not the worst it's been in the history of our country. Um, we uh, we can beat this and we can move forward and we will. You know, the the only part that's crippling is we're not moving around, right? The second we start moving again, things will start buying gas again and we'll start. Eating out at food and restaurants again and so on and so forth. So um, and and momentum will pick back up. So.
About where we were ten years ago personally. That was the kind of coming out of the Great Recession and um. You know, to be perfectly honest with you, my family had experienced unemployment twice within a year. I mean, those were desperate, scary times and yet. Things are better for us and things have been better and these are things that happen and they slam you in the gut and you start to look around and say, shut everything down. And that's the psychology of not having resources. There is actually a study of the psychology of of poverty, of feeling resourceless. And we tend to shut down and start to make decisions that are very. Uh, kind of based on the information only in front of you. You kind of get tunnel view. We do have to fight against that and think about what happens in the future. Because. We can be in a very different place now. Uh, than we will be. In two and a half, three years. You know, and we just have to live with that ambiguity and it's awful. And I'm not sure we can say any anymore about that.
No, and exactly, you know, and I think even um. Um, we just have to be empathetic for for what people are experiencing as well, you know, because. Some people won't be able to go to restaurants in in a few weeks or I mean, in months and it's just um, so. Every household is being hit at a different level and that really leads in um, I I do actually want to address this Chris Potts. Oh, before that, um, Kimberly says, thank you for all you do. So I thought, thank you, Kimberly. Um, but Chris Potts says, no one is saying not to build a new school. We are saying there is no reason to go with the most expensive. School building project. Why is this being pushed? And I I hope we reframed it on Tu- on Tuesday night and even we reiterated it um, at the beginning of of this meeting. Um, in terms of, we want to listen. Yes, I think it was important to hear. The educational benefits that Christine Power put together. Yes, it's important to hear that we want to um. Have our schools be flexible for population fluctuations and also long-term vision as Jess um. Was talking about uh, long-term vision in terms of how we can um. Realign our schools or decrease one of the school buildings, you know, down the line when we lock has to be considered. So I think we are trying to think in the future. But then this is the now and we also have to reconcile what people are experiencing and what the town can tolerate. So. Um, I I would say that we are not pushing this. We're just trying to gather information and that's why this survey is so important. To us that we do not want to make that decision without knowing what the town um, can tolerate and um. What are on the hearts and minds of people.
And I would also say. That just uh, in terms of reading your question, Chris, uh. I don't know who the the we is in specific that you're saying, uh, the the statement is we are saying that there is no reason to go with the most expensive. School building project. I think that there are some people saying that. I think that there are also people saying we are looking for. Uh, all of our options. So. Um. It's it's tough to know who who the we is. There are probably a number of people are saying, why do you want to go for the most expensive school? Uh, option and there are also other people who will say. Why wouldn't you do the best thing for future thought that you can think of? Why wouldn't you think about? The educational implications behind that. So what we're trying to do is offer a full range of options.
I think the the consideration for Wheelock uh, is is also very important, um, because even if we. Delay the Dale Street project by a little bit, but still build the bigger school. Um. And then we lot, you know, and we luck, when we continue to grow as projections say. Um, we're going to need that that space. We can't shrink it, but we may not have to add on to it. Uh, and adding on to Wheelock would be a larger expense because it will be six to ten years from now and uh. As Mike Quinlan said, you know, the those construction costs go up by four or five percent a year. Um, so. I think the other thing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the other thing to remember in in two thousand nine, because you you did reflect on that and um. I was in uh, I was in Sharon at the time, uh, and the stimulus money, we were facing a pretty bad cut that year as well. The stimulus money uh, allowed us to get through with minimal, you know, minimal layoffs that year. But it also, um, we also had a shovel-ready project. Um, and so we got a larger reimbursement uh, to build that middle school. Uh, in Sharon. So uh, our, we actually got more money uh, to do it. Um, and. Uh, it made that possible because that project was shovel-ready um, at the time and that was the ones they were targeting to. Get construction going, get people working again. So um, and I think that's some of the thinking, you know, that we want to make sure. Whether we um, whether we can afford it at this moment or not, uh, is is still a question, of course, right? Because no one's denying that. But I think um, I think one of the, from the building committee's perspective and. Um, and Selectman and Selectman Mercucci was had brought this up. You know, it really made sense is to uh, you know, continue through our process and and the reflection because we've already paid for that, paid for that feasibility. So. We should do a good job and still continue to put the effort in uh, that we're doing with all the community forums and getting the design of the buildings and so. Uh, that we're doing with all the community forums and getting the design of the buildings and so that we know that we have a solid product. In the event that we have maybe have that opportunity to have a shuttle ready project. So.
Whatever that project may be, however big that project. So that's the important part too, is remaining. Flexible and open to the opportunities that present themselves after this crisis. Because I don't believe that there is any crisis that doesn't present an opportunity. In one way or another. You know, that history doesn't bear that.
I think, um, I mean, I've been, I think the common thread, I, I like, I mean, Bonnie's words are fair, you know, take stronger action. You know, it was a million dollars and. Just looked at it, we, we've internalized, um, a big part of this is. Working with the town to the watch and see how this plays out and how can we. Resolve or come to a, you know, come to a solution that works for everybody. And I, I, I think there is some linkage even when we're talking about the school, whether it's option A or B. We really are trying to get feedback from the town. That allows us to take all of that in. So I, I really, you know, I think. Based on knowledge that we had, you know, it might say, hey, I could lean this way. Based on what's happened these last couple of months, things are changing. And we're continuing to try to seek, you know, feedback. From the town and, and whether it's, you know, like, how, how, how far can you push back or take stronger action? You know, like some of these things are still playing out. We're, we're trying to be good. You know, good citizens and make sure that the other, you know, members of the town, he was, hey, look, the schools are really trying to work on this. So that, that's my, you know, hey, this is tough. You know, this is really, really tough, but I think the town's going to have to work together. Um, and I'm talking more about the first topic, you know, the budget. Near term is where, where we are going to have to be collaborative and, and working together as opposed to being, you know, kind of going like that.
Motion is not really going to help us enormously except for empathy and understanding. But being angry about the situation we're, we're in right now. That is a waste of energy. You have to stay clear-headed.
Uh, well stated, all of you. Um. All right. So will future agenda items, our FY21 budget that continues, the Dale Street project, challenge success, student feedback. Social emotional learning. Educational stability policy review.
Actually, Anna, can I ask quickly, uh, student feedback, is that the, uh, can you tell me a little bit about what student? What that would mean?
You know what? That really stemmed from, um. I think over the years and even, you know, especially with our high school reps in terms of, um. You know, we, I think this year we got some great ideas from our students. First of all. Carrie White kind of leaning into, she's now a senior, but when she was a freshman in terms of, you know, standard based and what that meant. And so that kind of opened up a world for us. Also, um, Ella Kohler, when she talked about. The different options, you know, wish the school would talk a bit more about gap years. And I think this year the schools definitely did. They had. Meetings about it. So I think that was great. And so I think listening more to our students. And hopefully formalizing it a bit more, again, not to out anyone, but really. You know, they're, they're adding some value. And I think, I forget one of the students, he was at Elizabeth. Ponziaco, you know, we have math, we have writing lab. Wouldn't it be awesome to have a science, you know, help center? You know, these are all wonderful ideas that are.
So how do we draw them out and incorporate our kids more into the, the life of the school committee, kind of?
Exactly. And just, and general feedback for, for all of us to grow, you know, we're all here for the students. And, um, and just to kind of. Getting towards formalizing their, 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 their opinions.
One thing, um, if, if I could just quickly. Add, I don't. Although we are in this period of time where we are running, running from place to place to place, I mean, all of our heads are spinning and I can't, I can't imagine that, uh, Jeff and Michael. Have had a day off since about March. I want to make sure that we are not forgetting our kind of long-term projects as well. And Christine, you may. Bite my head off for even thinking about this right now, but I do know that there are people who are still very curious and very invested in understanding about the standards-based feedback. I wouldn't even. Ask her, I mean, I'm sure that she was like just about to write that report and then everything went to heck and we need to change our focus, but I want to make sure that that continues to be something that we think about.
Definitely, definitely still on the radar, no doubt.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I know that, but I want to make sure that we don't. You know, we all have to be constantly thinking about these things that we don't want to lose in the cracks.
You're right.
We always need to think long-term, even while we're thinking short.
Absolutely. Great. So at this point, we're going to move into. Executive session. Do we have, actually, before we go into executive session, we are not coming back. To open session, but do we have any kind of closing comments for the public that you folks would like to say? Oh, yes.
So, um, I, I am just. Thrilled and excited. To get, at three o'clock today, to get a email from Desi. Letting us know that there are guidelines now in guidance around having. Outdoor live graduations. I'm so excited for our kids. Um, I just can't wait to, to get to that point. We're looking at August 1st right now. Um, it's just, just really. Really happy that we waited and we, we, we really were patient with this decision and, um. Just, it's just great. I'm just so excited. We're going to have a graduation.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be a weird graduation, but it's still a graduation.
It'll be different, but it will be. It'll be in person and it'll be on our field and I'm just, just so excited for our kids.
Yeah, great news.
And then just also before our next meeting, um, is, uh, is our rolling rally for our seniors. So that's going to be on May 31st, which is the actual day of our original day for graduation at one o'clock. And I know our teachers have been awesome about signing up to participate and, um. I know the community is behind us, so we're really excited about giving those kids that, you know, we haven't forgotten about you and, um. We were doing that on the symbolic time of one o'clock, which was their real, their real graduation date. So. I know the community is going to come out and support us and support our kids and we're looking forward to that as well.
I, I actually, if we can also think, thank, uh, the police chief who. Has been so incredibly supportive in the midst of a public health emergency in which she could have simply said no. Had, sounds as though she has tried very hard to make sure that we can do this in a way that is safe. And leaned into it.
Yeah, I would say not only Chief Garet, she's been awesome. Christine Trirwiler has been great with it. The Board of Health has been supportive, Chief Carrico. The DPW and Mo have all been great too. So it's really been a, a town-wide effort to make sure that our kids feel special on that day.
I think it's fantastic and I want to special shout out to, to you, Jeff, and the staff, the high school hand delivering all those, uh. Grad signs. I, I loved seeing those photos and, um, it made the kids feel. Special and valued and that they count and they matter. So thank you guys for taking that extra effort. It was. It sounds little, but it was huge.
No, it's huge.
It was the best day I've had since March 12th. Not even close.
Indeed. Super. So, um, we are going to go into executive session to discuss COVID-19 issues related to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. This is regarding Midfield Teachers Association. Our next meeting is on June the 4th. And, um, do we take a roll call to go into executive session? I think we do. Yes, um, Jess Riley?
Here.
Leo Brem? Leo Brem?
Here.
Megan Glenn?
Here.
Tim Knight? Tim Knight?
He muted, Tim.
Sorry, here.
Here. Okay, wonderful. So, um, will we just stay on here or beam into executive?
I think we beam into executive.
Okay, lovely. All right. And thank you to all the participants who joined. There were about 22 of them in total at one point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so long. Thank you very much.